8:30 PM. So Dr. Wood presented the research of the ABD management. I have asked six to ten partners to sit in. And we're going to move on to discussion of ABD district planning. So that's another one.
Thank you. This was a topic that was brought up in a previous board meeting. And the question became, more information discussion regarding ABD classes, ABD selection. And I'm going to ask Mr. Rafe to give an overview of this information and lead a students' conversation. Mr. Rafe?
Thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity. I provided you all with a document ahead of time so you can review how our grading scale looks like, what classes are weighted, and how we choose to recognize students at commencement. Those measures have been in place for nine years now is when they were last revised. The kind of the whole idea of academic standards or standards-based accountability movement as it was coming into vote, we went to this standards-based grading system recognition at commencement. As far as weighted classes go in our grading scale, the grading scale is set throughout all of the high schools and middle schools. So that is how a letter grade is determined. Elementary, the elementary schools use a different grading scale. Their grades are based on progress to standards. So they get different grades than traditional letter grades. The only courses that we give a additional weighted value to our AP classes. We don't weight honors classes. And the reason is because we put that in place, the reason we've done that is to, it's because there's such a variance between honors classes. And we believe the colleges unweight grades anyways. But with regards to the AP classes or college level classes, with dual enrollment, advanced placement, we want to encourage our students to stretch themselves into those classes so we feel the weighted grades warranted. With regard to the academic recognition at commencement, we do Summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and cum laude. We do two, we have two ways for a student to be recognized as a valedictorian. Someone who has the highest GPA in the class and someone who has taken the highest number of AP credits and maintained qualities in all their courses. So as an example, this year at Old Tandhee High School, we had one student who had a 4.3 grade point average, 4.38 grade point average of 11 AP classes, but somewhere in his academic history he had an A minus as an example. There was a second student who took six AP classes, had a 4.1 grade point average, but his academic history was all A's. So he made valedictorian status through the second measure. The first one made it through the first measure. Sometimes it's difficult to explain. People traditionally believe that valedictorian is the person with the highest GPA. That is actually not correct. The valedictorian is the person who gives the farewell address. So actually nine years ago, when we first recommended these changes, we recommended removing that, about recognizing the person with the highest grade point average. Because I think that's what kind of spurred this conversation with Austin channels, TED Talk and those kinds of things. Kids get discouraged or get discouraged for taking a non-weighted class and not taking a weighted class. So as a process point, my recommendation would be that we convene a group of high school staff, administrators, counselors, teachers, parents, and students, and do a study of it to see and bring back when we go through the handbook revision process, because this is all part of the handbook, the handbook revision process if we want to make those changes or not make those changes.
I would agree with that because I want to know what other, maybe another way out there, what others?
Some of the ways.
I remember when, it was back when Mindy Fari was principal at Old Tandhee when we did away with class rank, you know, class rank. Because what we found was that in some, we are such a high-performing school district that if you ranked 10...
Outside the top. Some highly selective schools do deny admission to students who aren't in the top 10% of the rank. So we have students with a 3.9 grade point average or, you know, 4-point grade point average who aren't in the top 10%.
Right.
And they're automatically denied admission. So we don't, we calculate rank, we don't report rank.
Right.
And there's all kinds of different, it's hard to say but it's different. And some kids, you know, the GPA game is a game. Some kids really want to play. There's always that one, one or two kids that really want to play it. They're a lot of experience in those, in that area. But it, you know, we don't want to, we want to make sure we're proper. I do believe we have a lot of mechanisms to properly recognize students. And I do believe our grading system is by and much fair. Kids who take those college level classes with weighted grades is a good way to recognize or refer to those classes. But through further study, we might find additional ways.
And to your point originally, the two students you compared, who's to say that one's better than the other? I mean, I get down to the, what does being valedictorian really mean to you to speak at graduation? But I would not say that the people we saw speak at graduation were necessarily smarter or better than the other students. So, I mean, one of the radical things out there is don't have a valedictorian, you know? And so I just, I would like to see the conversation, you know, Austin for not being valedictorian is very exciting about his freshman year at Vanderbilt. And was just accepted, I actually talked to him the other day, talked to him a couple times, was accepted into a program. He actually asked to arrive a week and a half early for a program that he's going to be in at Vanderbilt. And so I just, I just want to have the conversation. I just want to look at it. And, I mean, there was a time, I think I remember with the schools where each high school had a different, you know, had different ways that they chose valedictorian. It wasn't always, and so I think we've come a long way, but I'd like to...
We used to have three measures, this was the last year, we had three measures. We took the third measure out because I got announced that I could not explain it to people. So just to do some consulting.
So I understand your recommendation was focused to a group to look into verbal issues. What group would that be?
My recommendation would be to have the three high school principals, guidance representation, staff representation, parents and students. All three of the high schools have principals advisories, all grade level groups that they convene on a quarterly basis. And it's amazing, like, we think it's an issue when you get 100, you know, 25 at each grade level get together and they might just say, what we do is fine.
But I think it was the valedictorian, one of the valedictorians at Orange who said, "I don't know any of you," in his valedictorian speech, "and I want to meet you and my name is, let me introduce myself." Because, and his point was, he spent all of his time in his room studying. And it came to him now that he's graduating that the people didn't know him and he didn't know them.
Right.
He was so focused. That was his goal. It's not a bad goal to be valedictorian, but he realized that what he didn't know.
But there's, I mean, it comes back to when you recognize that one person.
Right.
You're not recognizing the other four in the class, but, you know. I do, there was a board member, when we did this, there was a board member at that time who was adamant that we recognize the highest GPA in the class. So that's why it was, it was a wish of honor.
I just think it raises, I think it raises some good questions. So I appreciate him coming and speaking to us and raising English.
And I did put the dirt sheet down. There was an example of how to calculate grade point average.
Yes.
For some of you with parents, parents of younger children, just in case in the future, because being a numbers person, you want to learn how to calculate grade point average.
There's no state standard of what an A is. Because like in Westerville, an A is 92 to 100, you know? So there's no, it's a local decision. In ours, I did research on this in 2012, ours is higher than our surrounding school districts.
And the A's, the minuses, if those minuses and pluses really drive grade point, they matter, they matter a lot.
Westerville gives 4.3 points for 100.
And quite honestly, what the colleges do when the kids send their transcripts, they look at all their grades. A consistent phrase we hear from the colleges is that they want to, they want to see that the students have challenged themselves with the most rigorous curriculum possible and achieve at a, at a level that is indicative of their ability. You know, they discount a kid who doesn't take any honors or AP classes but has all A's and give a higher weight to a student who's taken honors and AP classes and has a few B's sprinkled in. So when they make those selective admissions decisions, and the colleges report to us is that they, they do dive into the transcript and look at it course by course, what opportunities did the students have for honors classes? I think it's more impressive that they take them without the weighted grade, because that shows they really want to stretch themselves.
When will work this into the calendar when we may be ready to conduct?
Well, we'll work off of the handbook provision process if needed.
Sunday graduations?
We, we...
Private context to the, what I was talking about.
We're talking about Sunday graduation because we do all three graduations on the same day. As we moved our calendar up, there are significantly more and more conflicts that arise on a Saturday. There's league championships in track and field at all three schools. And track and field is a high participation sport, upwards of 30 seniors on each high school team in track and field. And because of when we're graduating, it's in the conference championship timeframe or in the district championship timeframe. So they're all participating. It's not like the regionals or the state level competition where we might get one or two participants who unfortunately, because they're so talented, they're going to their, to their event. There are music competitions on Saturdays in the spring. There's baseball, lacrosse, again, all high participation sports. We know, we know there'll be one conflict on a Sunday morning typically now. So we know that one, and that'll be one. There are so many with the current Saturday structure, we would recommend for the benefit of our students and families to move to Sunday graduation.
So do, that's the same time?
Yes.
10:26?
10:26.
And we did, the first year that Orange opened, we did it on the Sunday graduation, so it's been done before. My, my concern is that last graduation on Sunday night at 6 o'clock. Because if you have people coming in from out of town, and we do have a lot of people who have family members in, and I'm talking Cleveland and Cincinnati or Pittsburgh, you know, not just out of state, but, you know, they like to come and participate too. That's, that last one was, was hard. And I did hear from the Orange people because they graduated in that last one when we did Sunday graduation. To tell you the truth, I didn't hear any concerns about church services, which, you know, take that as it is. I can go to church on Saturday. But they, that 6 o'clock time, I heard.
Really?
Yes. So I just want to make people aware of that.
I think back, I got kind of put on an informal call when we started talking about it and talked to a lot of parents. And basically what I got back was, I don't care whether it's Saturday or Sunday, but decide now and don't change it.
Right.
Because people make a lot of other plans. There's more than just the ceremony.
Right.
It's not just about travel, it's reserving.
The tents.
The tents and the thing. And so I didn't have anyone that said, no, it has to be Saturday, or had really concerns about travel or people who really wanted to come, go make arrangements, be up on Monday and participate. But it was, make a decision and don't change it, don't tell me.
When does Ohio State graduate next?
Sunday. They graduate on a Sunday.
So we would, will we be in competition with them? Because I think Miami and Ohio, we will be in, Greg, does your daughter graduate next year from Miami?
No, fall again.
Okay. Because I think that's Miami's graduation weekend. And I know we have a lot of kids, I'm just throwing that out there again, I'm not saying what we are.
You're just wrong on the range. Yeah, that's still now, we've moved it up. That's going to be a continuing...
But is Sunday a little more timer?
I don't know.
Yeah. But the point is wherever we, whatever day we pick, it's going to be an issue with somebody, I'm sure.
So then we can, tonight, Thursday, but I think...
How states is Sunday and May 10?
Okay, so we could, yeah. I think, I think we would hit Miami's and I don't know what day, if they do a Saturday or Sunday.
So I guess let's do some final discussion of considering process duration at 6 o'clock of this.
Yeah, do we need to, I mean, we all sat, well, majority of us sat there, you know, all day.
We went through that, I mean, we did go through that process in planning, the two-hour break in between felt with, you know, again, having, having been through that process of setting them up and the way, all the people in, all the people out, the way that people tend to mill around as they leave, it takes almost an hour for people to just get out of there. And then people are arriving a solid hour early. And there's even a crossover in that timeframe. It just makes it more, I mean, I realize it is a burden for you to be there all day. I think it's a more, it makes it more relaxed for the people coming in and coming out and for the principals getting set up. I guess, you know, the only alternative is to go nine.
Just, you know, issues left for us.
Right. Has there ever been any time?
No, even five.
Just throwing out there to do two, you know, one on Saturday.
The problem with that is rental fees. And you've got two rentals.
We get a, and then doing it in or whatever, everybody, I mean, I've got those, I've got that weekend.
Yeah, Southwest or in city schools, they're using the facility next year because they wanted to know how I like the facility, because they love it, it's great.
And once we got it, it's just the most, it's the most cost-effective for what, what we, you know, it's a...
And you've got teachers that are there to shake hands, put it over there for their school as well.
So it really has worked out well, since, you know, ever since we've had it there. And even to me, because for those of you who remember us graduating in Polaris Amphitheater, it was a beautiful venue, but having been stuck in a hurricane after, five days after my first graduation, it was this really, because you know there's times where we've had big rain right after graduation, so. The venue works well. And I have, I have that weekend locked up for like four years, so.
We don't have the, the space to, I guess that outdoors, you say, do it at each high school.
We did do a study, we did a study of the cost involved in, in order to plan appropriately to, because, you know, you can plant it outside and set up chairs and do all that work to set it all up. And runners and even van sound system, because our stadium sound systems are great for a sporting event, but they're not ideal for a, for something as like a graduation. But then you still have to set up an indoor venue because if you do get in, whether you've gotten people inside, so our, then we'd be in a ticket situation where you're limiting, like right now, we don't limit them. And then, you know, you have, like, what we vetted, and there was an overflow space in the auditoriums and simulcasting, I mean, it's just, it costs more to hold it on our own grounds, quite honestly. And then there's all the labor and manpower costs of doing stuff. We did study that.
So we'll probably put on a agenda Saturday, 6:26.
Very good. Thanks.
So they can get their tents and chairs ordered.
Okay, next discussion item is ABD, Technology Plan Plan, I'll test that.
Good evening and thank you for letting me present the technology plan process to you. And I wanted to remind you, it's not too long ago, almost one year, well, it is one year to the bond that you saw me for the first time and you were talking about getting school opening for the first time with me as the director. And here we are, a year later, talking about long-term strategic plans, multi-dimensional, complex district problems, right? So we've, we've all grown together. What I wanted to do was also say about a year ago this month, the very first document that I read that was published, Old Tandhee published document was Project 2020, very first thing I read. And one of the key takeaways that I had, you know, looking at it from, of course, the technology side, was something that is all too familiar now, is anytime, anywhere access to learning. Now, when you say that, it rolls off the tongue very easily, but it means different things to technology. And part of what I'm going to show you is you'll notice that I'm showing a 2014 to 2020 plan, carries us through the 2020, 2021 school year. And behind the scenes of this presentation, there's a seven-year strategic plan all detailed out, which I can provide more, you know, details on that. But what you're going to see is a summary of some of those tactics, of different things that we're doing to enable the district to meet its goals. Because that's what we do in technology. We're supportive of everything. Departments, families, as Adam pointed out, you know, parents out there that are driving certain initiatives, district initiatives, you mentioned IPADs, things like that. We have to be prepared and ensure that our infrastructure is sound to support that. Whether curriculum makes a decision, we have to be agile enough to be able to accommodate that and be prepared. So you're going to see a kind, kind of a combination between strategic and tactical, because by no means it was labeled strategic technology plans. But you'll get the idea, there's, there's some that may stand. So some of it's tactical, some of it's strategic. So I'll just take you through it and if you have questions along the way, just let me know. The first thing I'd like to do is give you a quick update on some of our recent accomplishments. You've heard of some of these already, you've heard me speak a couple times, you've funded several of them, and thank you for that. The very first thing you'll see on the list there are wireless access points. This enables access to the internet and our, increases our capacity and our ceiling of classrooms. So we are, in our phase two of that project, we'll be finishing that, and we're more than doubling the number of access points in our district. The other thing what we've, we've taken a look at is the computer software that's out there today. And I'm happy to say that we just completed our Microsoft Windows XP to Windows 7 upgrade for over 2,000 systems in the district, all 23 buildings. And we're, we're up to date, at least with Windows 7, which part of the reason for doing that was to support, you know, testing and current applications and things like that. XP is quite old. Windows is getting a little bit older, but it puts us in a, in a much better light and can support all the software applications out there. But we, we just completed that, 2,000 systems, it was a heck of a job done by our staff. We've also done the same thing with Apple operating systems to the most current one. And what happens with that is, as you can see, we have Windows 7 and we have Mavericks, two operating systems, both with those platforms, which helps us standardize, create efficiencies, and make better decisions, decisions and choices. Dark fiber network, essentially what that is, is our backbone. How the buildings are connected is through fiber. And again, with your support, we've acquired our own dark fiber network and then most recently the switches and things like that for the buildings. We've upgraded from a 50 meg to a 50 and 100 meg network to a 1 and 10 gig network. And I just wanted to give you a kind of a quick look at what, where we were at before and where we're going. So as you can see right now, I have a little pointer here, this is Shamingham, and that's where our data center is today. And you'll notice it's sort of a hub and spoke. You'll see all these connections out here. And, and that's fine and handy when you have, you know, you know, five buildings, 10 buildings, but it becomes infinitely more complex and more risk when you do that, when you have 23 buildings and two transportation areas and you're spread out over 100 square miles. So you can see that the red lines are the 50 meg fiber and then the 100 meg fiber. And that was our maximum speed. And you'll notice something that if any of these lines are cut, that building goes down. What we've effectively done is went from Time Warner over to Consolidated. And you'll notice that we have three 1-gig loops now with 10 gig fiber between them. Okay? So what will happen is now you have, at any point, let's say this building, someone's over here and they cut this line, well, what we can do with technology is just route them this way, right? If this line's cut, we route them that way. Again, technology, we can, you know, we just have to be set up to do that. But what it does is provide better access to internet number one for speed. And secondly, it provides us with some redundancy, so against risk, so that that building doesn't go down just because someone was cutting lines or they knocked it off a pole somewhere. So that's what that means. So when I, when I say dark fiber network, that's why, that's one of the reasons why we did it. There's others, but that kind of gives you an idea of what, what we're in the process of doing. And it'll be better for the district and the students all the way around. A couple other things, we're moving into an active directory environment. This starts to provide identity management, who you are, things like that. VMware server consolidation as we move into the virtual world. We consolidate our servers, there's cost savings, energy savings, all the things that's, you know, we had, these are all district goals, but from a technology standpoint, it helps us better manage what we're doing in terms of our power. And we'll be doing, hopefully doing the same thing on the desktop side. Whoops, I apologize. Specialty labs. The reason I point this out is in the labs, we noticed that what a workstation is compared to a desktop real quick, is it's just, it's extremely more powerful, higher graphics. It's generally used in CAD, engineering, art. And what we've done is we have enabled the students to work on devices that they'll use in the real world. Makes sense, right? They're not going to work on a desktop. You're trying to process, you know, a CAD diagram on a work, a work scene, much faster, better. Same thing with the Apple IMAX, especially for our journalism labs. They work on IMAX in the real world, let's set them up for success and get them used to using what they're going to be using in the real world. So when we did our upgrade, our XP to 7 upgrade that I was mentioning a few minutes earlier, those are perfectly fine machines for everyday business. And I think as reported, there's no reason not to pay them, let's just spend a little bit to do memory upgrades and we'll get a lot more use out of them and spend the money where it makes sense. And those were the areas that will be, we've upgraded or are upgrading and we'll be doing the same thing next year with another high school. And the other thing that we've done is we did a PARP preparedness assessment, essentially looking at, you'll see there's this device to test taker ratios, our network capacity, all those different types of things. The state provides us with some general basic minimum requirements. And obviously we, we've used those tools, we're recording on those tools, and we buy where necessary. If we need to increase the number of devices to match the test taker ratios to meet the window that we have to test, well, that kind of guides us in the right direction and say, well, we need so many more here, and we're okay, and so on and so forth. So we've actually gone through and done a complete test across the district and we've budgeted accordingly to bring up those ratios for our preparation for, because there's the PARP and other assessments. So that leads us to the process. You'll notice it's labeled a process. Again, it's not the actual plan itself, but I just wanted to kind of give you an idea that, while there's strategic, I've done strategic planning for 14 years, it starts with a plan. And you need a vision and you need goals. You've set some of the goals already, but this is from the technology side. Our purpose is to support achievement. Whatever we do, we're going to enable the students to train, and we want to transform the teaching and learning aspects of it. And we want to enable teachers to do what they need to do in the best way they can. We also, you know, provide technology resources, as I said, to the entire district. And we want to make sure that we explore all opportunities, both physical and virtual environments. We want to have an engaging, we want to inform and engage students with the technology. You know, I'm not going to go through and read all those, you can kind of see there, but the idea is that we want to increase that and make sure that aligns with curriculum. So Mr. Rafe and I, along with Mr. Fede, you know, meet weekly from a curriculum standpoint, instructional technology, the technology, meet every week. So again, it's exactly as Mr. King was pointing out with, we're all connected. And it's, it's just, it's amazing. I wanted to say that, you know, I'm very proud to live in the district, number one. And of course, I'm here, but there's a terrific team, I mean, from curriculum, all the administrators. And again, you know, being with EMG, but I've been acting as... And again, you know, being with EMG, but I've been acting as a director for the last year, just incredible bunch of people, currently smart, and it's a pleasure to work with them. So with that, I just wanted to kind of give you a 10-point plan for the actual process itself. Again, I won't bore you with reading through every single one of those, but it starts with a vision, kind of, you know, go through stakeholders, data, and ultimately, you want to be able to be prepared for what's to come. No one has a crystal ball, you can't predict the next technology of the future, nobody knows what's going to be there from five years from now, but what we can do is at least understand that it's a process, and it has to be reviewed and monitored. There could be emerging technologies that come out, do we want to take advantage of them, do we want to pass that one by, wait for them to, it's a process. So one thing's for sure, that we need this, ensure sound infrastructure, and I'll go into more detail about how that drives projects for us and how we make those decisions. Again, the vision is to be part of daily learning, we want to empower students, and we want to be seamless and invisible, bottom line. We shouldn't be a hindrance to teaching and learning at all. So that's our vision, that's what guides technology. Again, it's not, hey, let's buy it because it's nice and shiny and new, and we love routers and switches and servers, there has to be a purpose. So again, this is why we do it. The other thing is stakeholders. I don't sit in the office there over at Channingham and make this stuff up on my own, it's a collaborative. And we want to involve a lot of different folks, not only just from the inside, but also from the outside. And one of the things that I just started, and we haven't even met yet, but we need a technology advisory committee, and you can see, whoops, we have people from the central office, and we have volunteers, actually, from all three high schools. We have middle school participation as well as elementary, okay? It was fantastic. And, you know, a lot of times, you know, when I address them at a principal's meeting, I have a very short window, and it's hard to communicate what virtual technologies are in 10 minutes. They don't understand it, they don't care, they turn, they hit a button, technology works, they're happy. But when they're involved in the process and they understand that it's there to support them, and they have input and a voice for what makes sense in the classroom, again, working with Mr. Rafe and Mr. Fettie, along with Jessica Fields, those things find their way into the technology plan. And what we'd like to do is also have one from the outside, so get some parents, make some business folks, manufacturers, people that can advise, and we want to do both sides of the coin, so it's not just me saying it, it's everyone, and everyone's bought in.
We had someone come to the last facilities committee meeting who was interested in getting involved in the district. He sat through that, and at the end, I directed him toward you, because he had a much stronger technology background and felt he could probably add more value there. So I really do think that community voice, and he was strategic planner for a technology company. So I love the idea of getting, you talk about all stakeholders, right now, you've got some gaps on getting those other stakeholders voices in there.
Just as long as they're not looking for work, because that would be a...
He was not looking for work, he was not. He was interested in facilities committee, and then he realized...
His resume, I'm just way to my desk.
Oh, good.
So I'm aware of that. And so again, we want to get additional advisement, and we can, you know, start the path, and then, again, have it vetted all different ways, and then, of course, you know, you're driving it, right? So I can propose to get you from A to B, anytime, anywhere access to learning in 2020, I can, we can get there, but there's things that we need to do along that way. And I think you'll find, the next several meetings, you'll see some of those components come together, and it's all part of that plan. It's not a one year, you're done, you go back, it has to be a commitment for multiple years in order to get to where we need to be. One of the things, this is no secret to anybody, data-driven decision-making, you know, some organizations will do part of this, but maybe not all of it. The idea is to do those four things and keep doing that, mining, analyzing, community engagement. You might be able to get the data, report on it, then some people stop, but you need to be able to do, see it, you know, maybe there's principal dashboards that are needed. We were talking about third-grade guarantee earlier. Well, there's certain things in there that would be important for a principal to see, engage, to make changes on the fly. We want to be able to provide those types of things, and then also be able to predict the what-if scenarios. So all those four components, I think we do a lot of these things already. I think there's also room for, we have so much data, that, you know, we want to continue to make decisions based on data and facts. Of course, you know, as we go through and talk about technology, I just wanted to give you an idea of some of the supporting things that we do, from student computing, teacher computing, classroom management, audiovisual, and then at the building level, everything from digital side, and all the way to supporting surveillance camera systems and video distribution, things like that. So again, you can take any one of these components, and there's a subcategory of 10 items there and 10 items there. So this is just a summary of some of those technologies that we support and have to be prepared for in the future. Working alongside Jessica weekly, she provides a lot of professional development to the district, and as you can see, each of the buildings have their own growth plans. So it's not enough just to have technology, you need to actually have professional development for the teachers and the principals, and how to use it, and how to integrate it in the classroom at a high level, not just to say, well, ring a bell, go use the Chromebooks or laptops, it needs to be part of the curriculum. So she's working on that, and also training, a couple tiers of training for the technologies and some of the applications that we use, and then also the learning aspects of it. So I just wanted to provide that to you. Here we go, in terms of sound infrastructure. So we can do whatever we want to do, right? But, there's a big but there. It's, we need a foundation, a solid foundation. And as you look at blueprints for next-generation classrooms, where we're at today, this is sort of the plan, start with a robust Wi-Fi network, we need to have access to these technologies or applications. Stable academic testing environment, that includes the network, making sure it doesn't go down, empowering teachers, PD, bring your own device support, that's, we're a little bit away from there, but we have to provide the foundation now if we're going to do it two years from now or three years from now. Leverage low-cost technology, example, TVs are a problem, the way we manage those today, we need to do it a little bit differently so we can take advantage of that in the classroom. How we manage our network and our devices, we have to simplify that. So there are some things down the road that we can certainly do to do that, as well as mobile's going to be everywhere. Again, anytime, anywhere access to learning means, well, you're going to probably use a mobile device, most likely, or you might be at a Panera accessing stuff, or you might be at home accessing something. So we understand that mobile is where it's at, or you have a mobile, you know, the world is your classroom type of thing, so anytime, anywhere access means just that and from any device.
I think one of the things I want to call out in the connection point is that teachers call it. As someone who works in training, we actually have classes on how to do virtual training, because it is a very different experience. So designing curriculum, designing coursework, all of that is incredibly different in an electronic age, and so you can have the greatest teacher in the classroom who will struggle. One of my master's classes was about virtual training, and the professor that actually taught the class at a major university had the most technology issues actually teaching us the class online, and that's what the class was about, was preparing how to do virtual training. And I don't know if she did it all on purpose to show us how badly it could go wrong, but she was a wonderful professor and got great reviews, and it was probably one of the worst classes I ever took, because she was not a technology. They just said, she's great in the classroom, she's going to be great online, and she was not. So I just want to make sure that's really highlighted on the professional development that it will take to really take advantage of the technology that we're going to need.
Okay. Again, this just goes into more detail about what I just described, all of this, so again, I'll save you the slide, but the idea is that we're doing these things, we're starting these things to be prepared. Again, those are just details. What that does for us, and this gives you an idea, this actually is the foundation of that, you know, seven-year plan. These types of things get you to the 2020 plan from a technology perspective, and fully well, understanding what's happening at the department level, what's happening externally. Again, it's very complex, there's a lot of moving parts to it, but there's big hitters here. Again, we're doing this, doing this. We talked a year ago today about single sign-ons and all those types of things. Unwinding what we have built over the time is also complex. So we want to put strategies in place to get you to where you want to be, and make it easy for parents to access, and, you know, I don't want to say do business with us, that's the business side of the coin, but the idea is, it should be seamless for them, very easy, what they're accustomed to doing in their other parts of the world, and websites, they should be able to do with us. These types of things, again, you all know what these things are, content management, process management, storage and backup, disaster recovery, again, you know, this has to do with minimizing our risk and security and data. We have to get a good grip on what we're doing here, and as we move into the Microsoft Active Directory world, if you don't have these things, it gets pretty hairy pretty quick. So we know that these are huge, they take multiple years sometimes to plan out and fund and get behind, and everyone has to be bought in, so we understand that these are large and takes multiple people to make those decisions. Again, I just repeat, systems management, deployment management, how we roll out new software to machines, and how we monitor them, how we do our tickets, all those types of things, from network management through the entire system. There's plenty of tools available to us, again, it's just a matter of when we do that, there's no question we need to. Mobile device management, again, with more and more devices coming into the district, thousands of them, we're going to have to have a very tight integration between this and actually this. So who you are, authenticating, single sign-on, it all ties together, and then, of course, BDI, so many different things, you know, again, supports our BYOD, supports our energy initiatives in the district. If you can imagine, a desktop today takes 150 to 300 watts, and we're going to bring that down to 20, and multiply that by 20,000, or even 6,000 for that number, because it's only the number, it's thousands upon thousands of dollars, just in energy costs, savings. So these are the types of things that get you from point A to point B, but this might take seven years to do. I mean, ultimately, as you build it out, this, you could start, but you build it up to say, okay, this is enough. What the vision is of that detailed plan is somewhere close to 5,500 of those, to 6,000, you know, 3,000-plus Chromebooks potentially, we need to manage it. And these are the types of things that I'm talking about, not only management, but you need storage and all the things that go with it. So that was a lot of the hardware technology solutions, some of the applications, the major things. We're going to be presenting some things of fixing this, this is going to be integrated through our Power School, parents won't even know they're outside of Power School, it's all integrated there, single sign-on, the whole nine yards, no SPS, easy pay or anything like that, that's what we're looking at. There's no decisions there, we're still vetting this, but those are the types of things that we can do to help enable, you know, a better experience for our, not only our students, but the parents. Process management forums, these are the types of things you're talking about, Mr. Dunbar, regarding WebEx Training Center, those types of technologies. If we adopt those, you can train 1,000 people at a time, announcements, whatever you want to do, and then collaborative stuff with video. So I just wanted to kind of give you a picture, again, behind the scenes, details, costs, long-term, those types of things you'll need to eventually see, so that you can make some decisions on when that happens, and what we need to do, and what we need to plan for. Again, at the same time, we want to monitor and assess through the whole process, and again, you've heard about the Technology Advisory Committee, both internal and external, the budget management process and the forecasting, built out for seven years, so you can see how it builds, and then, of course, efficiencies through all of our different departments. So when I did the plan, I met with every single department head and every building I can get into at a particular time during preparing some of these things, and captured it, what are the needs, what does it look like, put it together, talk to some parents, what is it that we need? What is it... And again, it's just the first cut at it, right, for your long-term, the radar, so to speak. But you need to talk to people, and, I've talked to everybody, so, most everybody. And again, I just wanted to kind of set the stage for you that this is a cyclical process. It's a working document, as the plan builds out, it has to be looked at a couple, at least a couple times a year, and monitor against our budgets and our timelines, are we hitting our goals, are we doing the right things at the right time? Are we looking at emerging technologies and looking at effective practices? You know, look across the country as well as local, can we piggyback on those successes? Work with manufacturers that have done this all around, you know, they're okay, they can bring solutions to us that help us. But you need to go out there and look for it as well, and be an invisible partner, again, don't hinder the whole process, and be seamless. And again, I'll share with you more details, obviously, Brian hits me on the treasurer side of things all the time, but are there any general questions about our planning process, and kind of the vision of where we're going?
My reaction is just very comprehensive. I'm comfortable with that, I'm not sure of the...
Good performance. And we'll get school open this year, too.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just have a comment, not toward you, but I think it's good now we have a facilities plan, you know, and a technology plan, we've always had our CAG for academics, so it's all fitting together, so. And they have discussions in facilities about energy, talking about what's the difference of just leaving computers on overnight and those sorts of things, and actually, she's in buildings overnight going through and saying, what are the things we can do around it? One of the things that came up in the last meeting, and I remember you saying, we went in and turned the computers on for all the teachers, so that, you know, the first day it was running, I said, can we have them go in and turn them all off? So they're not on over the summer, I mean, is there a way? And are there things you can, I mean, I know there are, things you can build in to put as a standard thing that it shuts off? You know, the battery saving devices and things, have the computer shut off if it's inactive for an hour?
Right.
And so that kind of thing is coming up at the facilities committee from an energy savings standpoint, and I know they're communicating with you on it.
Absolutely. So Chris Prober and I have had multiple conversations with that, and we analyze a lot of the numbers together. One of the things that we talked about was mandatory shutdown of the computers at 4 o'clock, instead of having it run all night if you forget, and we just set out reminders. But the easiest thing to do is to do the systems management.
You can set it...
We were building that into the image to say, 4 o'clock, it's going to go down. We've actually extended it to like 6 o'clock, because some people have been staying over, and they were a little perturbed that it was going off at 4, so we extended it to 6 o'clock, so it'll shut off.
That's an amazing saving.
And it's just a small, small change.
Small little adjustment.
Next discussion, Communications Plan at that, Devin.
Devin's going to do the clicker. Also, as you see me standing with the actual person, I'm actually one of the person, as I've been an entire team, Devin and Will being one, Linda and me not here, obviously no record for this sort of team, and of course, Craig Kurtz, also here representing our 10-12 member Communications Committee, who is also here. The intent of what I wanted to do this evening, and we're not allowed to talk, is to talk about the 2014-15 communications plan. What we want to do is in support of benchmarking. We look at the entire communications, having the district team as a part of the plan, what we really wanted to focus on, benchmarking, and that is a high level of stakeholder engagement. And the way we're going to do that, basically comes down to, and I'm not going to read the whole slide to you, because you can make it very brief, it comes, essentially, it comes down to the point of, and meaning that benchmark is, one, we're going to use multiple tools to do that, because I really wish there was one magic button you could just push, and everybody would just get it, and they could hear it, read it, see it, smoke signals... and they could hear it, read it, see it, smoke signals, but there just isn't. Okay, so, one, we're going to use multiple tools. Two, we're going to, we want to use these tools to meet our stakeholders where they are, how they want to be contacted, and when they want that content. Because it is a 24-hour environment, because just because we really put it out there at four o'clock in the afternoon, some people may not see it till much later because that's what's convenient for them. The point is, we want to give it to them when, where, how, okay, and using multiple ways to do that. Oh, I guess I'm going to move to clicker, all right? Excuse me, Devin, sorry. And looking at that, we looked at, there's two ways, and we look at all of our tools. And those can be basically equipped in two categories, okay? Another is, one, there are internet-based tools and there's district, oh, I'm sorry, direct communication messaging tools. And what I, we have right now, is, um, what you see right now is this kind of bullet point of our internet, internet-based tools. So, I'm going to pull a couple of them out real quick, and as we move on, is that, um, most of them you're already familiar with. And that is, but what you may not be familiar with is that, that's almost second to the last bullet on issue.com. You may have seen those EZ magazines that you can flip, one flip online. And basically, what we're doing is we're taking existing content, particularly things such as our five-year, uh, report, district newsletters, things of that sort, and you put that online, and it makes it a very easy way to, uh, to flip through it. It's a very thumb-through, it's scalable, or as Mike Testa would tell you, responsive, that it comes down to the size of the other tablet you're using. Tablet device, phone, desktop computer, laptop computer. Uh, another, and that's also posted to the district's website. And feel free, if you have a question about any of these tools, please, by all means, jump, feel free to jump right in there. The next one, in the next category, is direct community messaging tools. And again, these are kind of the bullet point of what, of what these tools are. Most are already familiar with, but I did want to take a moment to go ahead and pull out the iContact, formerly as our ListServe tool. Still email-based, um, a lot of people still refer to it as ListServe, that's fine, but it's basically, it's an email newsletter marketing tool that allows us to give a little bit more contact with it, and provides more, actually allows us to give more information to our, uh, to our stakeholders. Um, another one that I wanted to bring, to break out in that, is that on that community-wide print newsletter, um, we've done some things on, that one goes out to everybody across the district. That's our traditional print district newsletter that, that you're familiar with. Excuse me. Before I jump to the goal, if you'll allow me to share just a couple of district accomplishments with you. Um, one is, you know, obviously, we've expanded our district's, uh, social media presence. It's a very visible portion of it, but actually, it's a very small portion of what we do. Um, but it is a very visible present, it is becoming a very valuable tool. I know in Facebook alone, since September, October, we've seen about a 30% increase in the number of folks who follow that that are already on that platform. Most of them are, pretty much, are our parents. Different platforms do different things, depending on who you're trying to reach. Um, with the one-stop flyer shop, uh, that particularly addresses, because RSS technology was thought was fading away, it addresses Board Policy 9700, special interest groups. And then, the other point I wanted to make on this slide was on the redesign of the community-wide district newsletter. Um, due to some efforts that we've made on that, that, that had been, as we had been reaching a couple of board meetings back, was part of the Ohio School Public Relations Association's 2014 market distinction, the district, and the Ohio has been awarded that on behalf of those efforts. So, what I want to do now is really spend some time and talking about these short-term goals and what we've looked at. So, in working with the Communications Committee up to this point, looking at the existing plan that was in place and, and over the years, what they're looking for, and talk with various groups, then we kind of take a look at, okay, where can we go from there? So, there's a couple of things that I really want to pull out. On the website, we've got a great district, we've got a lot of information we put out there, we're very proud of the information that we have because we are a very transparent district. But there are some things that we could do to reorganize it so that it's easier to navigate, make it more responsive, make it easier for people to use. Um, so that's going to be one goal, we're looking at launching that in early 2015. Uh, another piece that you see up there that I'm really going to bring your attention to is to meet, is to be able to, let's see, it's the number, oh, the second one, exactly, is that building-level liaisons. What that is, this is a big district, as I've heard several people say before, 95 square miles, 23 school buildings. It's just two of us, secretary, we can't be everywhere all the time, but what we do, we want to be, and we do our best to be there. But to help us do that, we're going to be working with established liaisons at each of the building. We will communicate, talk with, and also gather in that addition to our news on top of the existing ways we do it now. So, that doesn't replace any of our tools we're doing, the way we do it now, it just adds to that, uh, and better facilitate that. The other piece, that final one there, you'll see there is a short-term goals, and again, this is in one to two years. Many of these you've already started, uh, that student mentorships, want to take a look at bringing that in and bringing, working with, uh, our seniors at our high schools, within our existing mentorship program within the department. That final one I really want to illustrate is, um, working with and supporting the work of the School Advocacy Committee. Um, and it's, what I want to emphasize, it's not a lobbying effort, okay? I want to make sure I make that clear, whereas, we're going to be supporting that work. And so, we're anxious, anxious to hear, um, what comes out of that, um, I believe I heard, um, it was back in the future, say, um, the August meeting, I believe I heard, um, the, the district report coming. But basically, looking at researching the impact, what, what legislation impact that will be, what's coming, session dates, legislative dates, and just basically support that work. On a long-term goal, more along the lines of three to five years, we want to take a look at some opportunities to offset newsletter costs. That's that print newsletter, that again, goes to everybody. Um, it is very economical, we do do it inside, um, in fact, it's thoroughly designed in-house, so that could, that saves us a considerable amount of money. But there's still a cost associated with it to deliver to every single zip code. So, what we're looking at doing, some school districts have opted to go with looking for underwriting, advertising, or different revenues, we're going to take a look at that, if it's appropriate and it fits, and it doesn't get Brian heartburn, we'll look at, look at ways to do that, okay? Another is looking at ways to explore, uh, we're looking, we want to look at maybe, in addition to that website, we want to use interactive videos, and what I knew by that, that's just a nice way of saying how-tos. Like within our department videos, perhaps, this is how you do this, very short, very brief, very professional looking, that's pushed out to the speed of where you want to be, or they could even be more along the lines of for our students on an academic aspect of it. Another thing we're considering looking at is also exploring, you know, our former television studio in-house, or perhaps, uh, you know, in programming, that would fit along that. Um, or partnerships with existing, um, productive facilities or our networks, to go along those lines. Again, to use that messaging to put on the website and elsewhere. I know I've just gone a lot at you in a very small amount of time, but that kind of overall sums up where we're going. So, if I had to sum it up in one point, it's funny to me how amazing technology and communication kind of overlap in a lot of different areas, is that it comes down to the fact is, we want to give, we want to share the great news that's going on in this district, the things that are pending, things that matter, things that are relevant to our stakeholders, depending regardless of who they are, and there's many of them, is that it's relevant, it's timely, and it's, we deliver it to them. It's not enough for us to simply post it to the site. We want to give it to them where they are, how they want it, when they want it, when they want it, it's available to them. So, with that said, again, I want to thank Greg, he's one of our co-chairs, for coming out. And I'd like to thank my administrator to you that also is really the meat of what we do, and ask if there's any questions.
The, the one thing that I just want to point out quickly is that, um, if, if there's a way to engage the non-parents electronically, that would be great, because I know the cost of producing the newsletter that we do three times a year, but that's the only touch that we get with a lot of them. So, if there are ways by, you know, making it known out there on other sites to, A, join our, follow us on Twitter, uh, like us on Facebook, um, you know, come visit our website, that would be great for those who don't have children in the district so that they know what the message is. That's, that's the downfall, unfortunately, we've got to cap the audience with our parents.
I have learned, if I can address that briefly, don't mind, I have learned, uh, just anecdotal, and speaking with different, with some smaller groups in the area, and one of the things we're going to do is that, and you're right, those who are with us and looking at our analytics, they're gay. Once they get a couple of years out, particularly the students, they drop way off, okay? So, what we want to do, one of the key ways we can do is, again, in fact, I've heard, what I heard repeatedly is like, I don't know what's going on at my school unless my child tells me, once my child is out. So, one of the things we're going to be starting to do is that, that district E-newsletter, we're going to reengage that. And once we get the whole thing up and running with the iContact, with the signup, is we're going to fully push that out, and I mean, really push that out there here in about a couple of weeks on every social media channel we have, across the website, everywhere you go, if you want district news, you want to know what's going on, click here to sign up. Because right now, now we know how many people are there, how many people are getting it, when they're getting it, when they're opening, what they're clicking on. Um, so, I'm really excited about moving forward with that, we just got a few minor technical pieces to wrap up on that, but that would be one of the key ways, because email has been identified as our primary tool in the district and the most consistent.
I just feel that the social media is maybe of my course as well. Um, one of the things I found of the winter times, people with Twitter, with the creation of fake Twitter accounts blasting out on Facebook releases from the district about.
The fate of my existence.
Is there means, how do we control the creation and distribution of fake Twitter accounts compared to the district?
I, I'm laughing because the answer's yes, the answer's yes, and, the answer's yes, and, and a lot of it, believe it or not, we have. But because it is becoming so all-consuming, I really have narrowed the focus down to those who have clear copyright or trademark infringement, okay, where they take, literally, literally take the logo and pretend to be us or use our name. If they take it and they modify it, fine, okay, I can live with it. But when it's a clear, where they clearly have taken it, because there was a lot of that over the winter months. Um, I have been working with Twitter, Twitter has been very, I, I think that's why they got tired of hearing from them. I've become very reactive, taken it down. Facebook as well, but it's not so much of a threat anymore because a lot of the younger people aren't on Facebook anymore. The biggest issue we're having, right, the biggest challenge is Instagram. Um, Facebook now owns them, they're slow to respond, they're a challenge right now, but we're working on it, um, we're working on it. But that's, the short answer to your question is because art prints, where's it, art prints, sorry, art prints, I think it's the, the art teacher, long time. Art counter, thank you, thank you. Art counter taking the time to copyright those colors and that logo, and it took me a while to find it, but I did find that copyright logo, it has been, it's been a tool for me to, to knock a lot of that down. That's, that's clear copyright infringement. Why, and why Instagram is such a wild, wild west right now, I don't know. So, we're working on that. But I will also say one more point and I'll stop, is that as we have become stronger in that presence, I've seen people like, uh-uh, this is fake, this is not fake, we don't believe you, right?
If, if your voice is strong enough, it, it can become so recognizable that people say, uh, that's the one hurting the truth.
And early on, we did have a lot of that, in fact, I remember when I, I first met you guys back in September, late September, I actually had joined unknowingly the Rome District Facebook account, because there were several out there who were open to anti. So, I was one of the first things that Devin and I worked on was, uh-uh, let's merge these brains together and have one. Thank you, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, our final, uh, discussion item is, I'm G, the process of having more vacancies, we've learned that early in the night, we thought we were setting down factors about two hours.
She's going to stay here for midnight, you know, we don't have to celebrate stuff.
So, uh, who could affect the date, uh, tomorrow? But I've proposed, Sarah, that it kind of goes like this, we have to look it up, um, that's what that sounds like. We would, uh, tomorrow, post, went to the webpage, we have a standard webpage, open to backup. It's not like we've never been through this before, and so that's how I got the board to.
I've started to try to think, I mean, it's like two months after I got appointed, because I was appointed. Scott Galley got appointed, so I had to go through that process, and then I went there with you two.
And a higher revised code as well as our board policy, it's fairly, um, straightforward on how you approach this. You can fill out no quicker than 10 and no later than 30, but probably just can make a decision for us. So, it is in the purview of this board to make that decision.
Senator.
Should we run it later, obviously, put our action in better, no action, because you take no action, then that decision gets taken away from us. So, it really comes upon us to, to put a process in place and get a section done. Well, our, our event is, it's starting tomorrow, we post our webpage, the one-page application, where people would be able to go download, fill out, and submit. Um, in addition, I think it offers you the ability to attach a resume to it for that additional context. Um, we would need to determine how long we're going to keep the application period open. And so, I would, again, recommend, we have a meeting scheduled for June 26th. That we would, uh, open the application process tomorrow, keep it open to maybe a day prior to our board meeting, so that, which would be the 6th, 24th, 25th, so that on the 26th, we could carve out some agenda time and take, um, the population of submissions and narrow it to sub-finalists. That we would then, on our next board meeting, 29th, interview a number, two, three, whatever, Avery is a board, that is, and then appoint on the night. That would fit in the, no sooner than 10, no later than 30 timeframe, so if we can't do it on the 26th, then it's too soon. You know, if we go beyond the 9th, that's too late. And this is a way of also doing without special meetings, um, which saves money, so we don't have to get extra board meetings. Um, so that's how I kind of would envision that plays out, and that would give us sufficient time to get applications in. We would have a meeting to necessarily cut down this, Facebook cut down list, do, um, some brief, um, interviews on the 9th, and all this, make the section on the 9th. So, it's kind of a quiet process, we duly been through it before, Dave even through it before, anything that, on, I will do it through it, maybe it's a case.
The last time we solicited applications, with Stacy. Well, yeah, we had, yeah, like 72, and they kept putting them on first class.
We're actually still on them.
Oh, they are? I was going to say, but the files were getting so big, they, you know, kind of break it into like different sections.
Yeah, they're like A through N, and then you see, uh, the actual board with.
So, we were able to see them ahead of time before we met, which was good, because I was able to take notes on what stood out to me. So, if that, talking to technology, if that could be facilitated that way again, so that we're not sitting there in a meeting, reading all of them.
Yeah, so the indoor essentials, we would, if we closed the application period on the, the 24th, 25th, it would give us less than 24 to 48 hours to individually go through what's been submitted. Be prepared on the 26th to have a meaningful discussion in executive session of what's been submitted and made that cut down. Um, because if we go in there and try to go through them all for the first time, then that would be there all the time. You've got to, we've got to assume that our board members will do that part work, you come on the 26th, really be prepared and have a meaningful discussion on that, narrow it.
The applications we come in and try to, to the processes, I'll work with mine, make sure to, to do that. And it is a Thursday, right?
It is a Thursday, which is why we have to get posted tomorrow, because we can't leave it. And, um, we have to figure out how we do, um, some of this is going to be a mail and a postcard, and the effective date doesn't take a lot of time, it's tough enough to figure out how to.
How hard is it to close them?
It has to be, we had, people dropped them off again, and then Becky scanned them in too, if she had to scan them in, um, so.
How much time do we need, do you want to extend it to the 24th, if it gives us less than 25th, do we want pressure review to discuss them on the 26th? If there's as much time as possible, we can do a proper and a lot of the others.
If there's as much time as possible, we can do it, probably in a lot of the hours. I understand you're gonna get better time to see the policy, react to the policy.
And not that the, you know, two hours is gonna make you much, but you can word it out there tonight. It's not, you know, it's effective tomorrow, it's a known opening, it's a known effective date. So you could get something posted as early as this evening. Last year.
What are your thoughts?
I don't wanna do a special meeting only because of vacations that are, you have to, not only with us, but people whom we need out coming in for interviews. So if we make it known now that we're gonna interview on July 9th, that would be great. The only time I would see us having to do a special meeting in this scenario would be if we couldn't come to a decision on the 9th and we had to schedule a special meeting on the 10th or whatever.
That entire time, we should be agree at every point. Or we're able to come to agree at every point. If we get to, we can't agree on a cut down, or we can't agree on finalists, then yeah, we'd probably need a special meeting. Or we'd be advocating a decision.
How many days are we going to go? Tomorrow?
To 24. 25th will get you one day.
Because our meeting is on a Thursday.
Yes, it's starting tomorrow.
If we get it in by Tuesday, that gives us, then we could cross your applications. And post it everybody. Right. If we even had access to them as they were coming in, we could do more.
I mean, it's good, it's one way to have, it's not necessarily have to have the application. The thing one, the geometry person is, has the right information, so we need to have a special. So it's not like people need days to prepare one after the application. So I actually need sufficient, that, open it tomorrow, Tuesday.
It has to be.
I would say it has to be app.
It's not like you're going to Omaha, Nebraska. I mean, they can drive the app, they can drive it over.
Bring email and get it.
That's something.
Probably, right?
Right. Yes, so you're not scanning everything.
Nothing gets posted.
And then you don't just scan, stay in there and see what's happening.
Of course, it's not.
Now we can't do this.
Either print is good, email or he has a new schedule. So we get timing, post it, make open it tomorrow, finish it the day of Tuesday, we have a cut down on Thursdays. You know, Thursday will also be a problem. We get samples, that's important. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Any concerns, issues, questions?
A lot of pressure, but that's what we have.
So we can't have a good intention.
We need to make sure everyone's gonna be there on the 26th and the 29th because we'll be down a person.
So emailing the majority of those present, so we can accumulate and we'll be available three days of those. So we can, we could, we could. So with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn. I will assume we're done with discussion, any other questions? I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved. I second.
Any discussion?
Thanks, Ellen.
That's a damn hard.
Here, yes. I'm gonna do it wrong on my last one. You know, just to keep with the tradition, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Your wife.
Yes.
Your wife.
Yes. All right, next meeting is next Thursday.